Good evening, everyone. At 6:00 p.m. on February 12th, 2024, I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. We're going to begin with an invocation by a City Council member, Roblesky.
Thank you, my honor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, we just thank you for today, and even in this weather, Lord, we thank you because we know that with the rain will come flowers in the spring. And, Lord, we just ask that you be present in this place tonight. Be with us, Lord, as we make decisions that are the best in your eyes and in our community's eyes. Lord, we just thank you for every blessing you've given us, and it's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please. Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Council President Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert. And do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Uh, we do not have any other amendments other than what I understand is a change to the places for the Madison City Disability Advocacy Board. I understand that that's been worked out with council. I'm quite here with Maura off of her.
Okay.
But I think we have that worked out.
We will make sure we state the place numbers correctly when we make the appointments. Next, we have approval minutes number 2024-02-RG.
Move to approve.
Motion by Shaw, seconded by Powell. Any questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert. The motion passes. Next minute's number 2024-01-RG.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, motion second. Ready for vote. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert. And the motion passes. We do not have any presentation and awards, so we will move to public comments. Each member of the public gets three minutes to speak. Please state your name and your district when you approach. Is there anyone? I don't have any comment cards. Is there anyone from the public who wants to speak? Seeing none, we will close public comments and move to the consent agenda and finance committee report.
Okay. The finance committee has reviewed the regular and periodic bills to be paid and gone over the consent agenda, and I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Are there any questions or discussions? Seeing none, we're ready for vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert. And the motion passes.
Madam President, may I just real quickly, this, the consent agenda also included an $11,000 appropriation from Madison County for EMS and fire, and there was also a donation by L. Tucker for the senior center.
Sorry. Okay, thank you. Next presentation or report, starting with Mayor Finley.
Okay, and I'm going to start with the first reading for proposed ordinance number 2024-049, declaring real property located at 4182 Sullivan Street surplus and authorizing disposition actions for the sale of the property. So this is the old fire station property on Sullivan, and I think what we again have talked about is selling that and then putting that money back into where we can use it for things that the city needs.
And this is the fire station and Madison City Schools annex.
That is correct.
Property.
All right, so we'll bring that back to the next meeting. Um, a couple of other things. A reminder, the Civic Awareness Academy is still accepting applications right now. Those applications will be accepted through February 29th, and you can go to our website, madisonal.gov, to sign up for that. Also want to give kudos and a shout out to our Public Works team with all the rain that we're having here. Um, and I guess this also goes back, engineering and public works, engineering, design, and some of the things that get done. The public works are the ones that go out and have to clean the dishes, ditches on the front end, and then we today have already had a couple of different times where when things get clogged, they go while the water's running at the pace that it is and get that unclogged. So thanks to those guys. And lastly, one of the folks that you had here that just left was Edra Briscoe, who is our new communication specialist along with Samantha. Um, so we're now double teaming in that office and already putting out videos on that side. So with that said, that's all I have.
Thank you, District One.
Yes, ma'am. I have a couple of slides that I'd like to show you. The first is, I'd like to give a shout out to IDB. Can we actually go to that? Yeah, is that the, what's the second slide look like? Um, just want to give a shout out to IDB, which is our Industrial Development Board. Um, they don't get a lot of really recognition and bells and whistles and things like that, but they do a lot of work behind the scenes. That's the one I'd like to see. Um, I'd just like to recognize Sandy Patel at this time. Um, he served for many years on the IDB and due to new work commitments, had to resign, and we have a new member, Hannah Hubbleston, uh, first person I've ever met that has a master's degree from the London School of Economics. So we're very blessed to have Hannah, and just want to give a shout out to Mary Beth Burwin, our Director of Development Services, Tracy Gillespie, our Government Affairs and Economic Development Team, for the work that they do behind the scenes. Um, if we can go to that second, oh, see in the bottom there, that is a project that we're really proud of. It's the new FedEx Distribution Center. Uh, they came into Madison last year. Believe it's about 270,000 square feet of space, and it's just a huge benefit to our community with regard to having people come into Madison to work, also provide property taxes, sales taxes through their retail center. So I just wanted to give a shout out to IDB, um, and I'll be back next year to give another shout out during your annual report. And I've given those to all of you, and just wondered if you had any questions or comments about IDB and just... All right, well, kudos to that team, and I'm enjoying being a liaison to them. Second flyer that I passed out, and I have put some on the Madison Record newspaper box out in the lobby, is one of my favorite events of the year, and that's Ready Fest. Uh, it's coming up in two short weeks, February 24th. Uh, many thanks to Steve Perry for our Madison Fire and Rescue Department, um, who is spearheading the event. Um, this is our new flyer that charity Stratton did for us. We just, uh, Steve had it very bullet point, uh, you know, very, uh, he comes from a military background, and charity made it a lot more fun for us. So we're just looking forward to engaging with the community with this great event and hope to see everybody in two weeks, and that's all I have.
Thank you, District Two.
Yes, I had the pleasure of going to the Alabama League of Municipalities Advocacy Day, and I just wanted to point out that, um, there are several bills that'll be coming up that affect municipalities, and y'all received in your mailbox the Municipal Advocacy Journal. So if y'all would just make sure you take a look at that, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, District Three.
Um, I want to point out a couple weeks ago about the Safe Haven Baby Box. We received a baby. Um, baby, uh, it was a successful event, I guess. Um, so, you know, I'm, can't tell you, out of all the things that I've done in council and I've been up here seven years now, that absolutely, to me, hands down, any event, anything we have was probably the best thing that I've been a part of, and I was about that big of a part of it. So I want to thank the fire department for letting me just even be a simple part of it, so... And I don't know, you may want to speak on a little bit more.
Well, I think, you know, again, a couple of things. The Safe Haven Baby Boxes is nationwide. Um, Kids to Love was the one who secured this funding for this box and a couple of others in the state of Alabama. Uh, the great thing about it at a fire station, um, is there's typically, they're there 24/7, and if they're not there, an alarm goes off, and one of our other units would be there very quickly. Um, you know, you talk about risk and reward, you know, um, there's, there's so much that goes into it, and I think our guys, when they actually received the baby 12 days after that box was put in there, um, realize the significance when, you know, a life is saved because of an opportunity. And, you know, from a mother's standpoint, that's a, that's a monster choice that you make. And so, um, giving them the opportunity to make that choice is the first thing. Our team in anything that happens, and whether it's all, you know, a baby is relinquished to a traffic accident, to all the things that fall downstairs, you know, our guys just do a phenomenal job immediately. And then Madison Hospital, being as close as it was, is a, is a really big deal for our community. Um, that baby then goes to DHR and is already with, I say, a forever family once they get through the paperwork. So, um, the fastest I think they've ever had something utilized like that, and I'm with you, you know. Um, thank you to council for supporting that and to our team for getting it in place.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, so I just, I wanted to thank fire department, and also, um, don't know if the mom will ever hear this, but you did a phenomenal job, and thank you for your courage.
Mm-hmm. Amen. Thank you. This your fourth?
None new business.
Okay, I have resolution number 2024-039-R, authorizing archiving of January 24th, 2024, City Council workshop. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. New decision? Ready for vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert. And the motion passes. And finally, I have a thank you to St. John's second grade class that delivered dinner for us tonight before the start of the city council meeting. We thank you all. They came and visited. We took a little picture, and they gave us a certificate. And that's all I have. Next is board and committee appointments. And Maura, I think you're going to take us through McDabb.
Yes, ma'am, I am. And before I begin, I'd like to give just a little bit of background on the way McDabb works. Um, I, when I was first elected in 2016, I was appointed to that board as liaison. And then in 2022, uh, it's normal for us every couple of years to change those liaisons, and Councilmember Denzine became the liaison. And I shared with her that each person is on the McDabb, uh, board for three years. There are nine places on the board. The first person, the first place, is a person with a disability. Seats two, three, and four are a parent or a caregiver. Seat five is a Madison City School representative. Seat six and seven are people, two people, that have a vested interest in making a better society for those with special needs. Seat eight is a person that has a business that's not affiliated with the disability service, and seat nine is a person that has a business affiliated with a disability service. So everyone is very regimented in that there are certain requirements for those seats. And unfortunately, in 2022, three of those seats expired, and they weren't filled. And then in 2023, three more seats expired, and they were not filled. And the minutes haven't been posted in over a year, and so it's been a bit of a frustrating experience. I wish Councilmember Denzine were here so we could get some more information about this, but I'm here. I've been speaking with the McDabb board. They've not been able to have a quorum because they don't have people on the board. Tonight, thank you, with these four appointments, we will have a full board. The other people are in the process of reapplying, so I'll be bringing, um, two more people to you for the next meeting. So it's a little bit confusing. If you have your agenda, the first seat, um, we had put on there Jean Graham for place six. That, um, is not a right seat for her, so I am, uh, rest, uh, she was in seat four before, so I'm requesting that she be reappointed back to seat four.
Okay, Jean Graham for seat four, place four. Are there any other nominations for place four? Seeing none, Jean Graham is appointed by acclamation.
Thank you. Um, for letter B, Deana Young is a Business Development Manager for a new company that's coming to Madison called Safe Splash Swim Lab. Safe Splash will be providing disability service for those children and adults that have special needs to learn how to swim in a safe environment. It's a new facility that's going off of County Lime Road near Hardeman, near 360 Basketborg, and it's called Safe Splash Swim Lab, also going to support the two high schools, um, swim teams. And so I met with her, and she wanted to come to Madison, so that building is in the process of, um, being built, and she's excited to be with the, um, the city, so I am nominating her for the appointment to place nine.
Are you excited about that one?
I'm excited, yes, very excited, yes.
All right, Deana Young to place nine. Any other nominations?
Yes.
Seeing none, we, um, will appoint Deana Young by acclamation.
Thank you. And then Mrs. Carrie Schlenker is retired from the State of Alabama Insurance Board. She worked with the Medicare and Medicaid through the state of Alabama. She'll be able to provide wonderful assistance to McDabb as those, especially with new children that are coming into programs, uh, being able to navigate the state of Alabama insurance system. So with that, I'd like to nominate her to place seven.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, Carrie Schlenker is appointed to place seven by acclamation.
Thank you. And then last, Dr. Adrian Christopher, I would like to appoint him to place six. Um, it says place five, again, place five is the Madison City School Board. I'll be bringing that to you next, uh, at the next meeting. Dr. Christopher is an associate professor in Special Needs Department at Alabama A&amp;M, and he will be a fabulous resource for McDabb, um, for them to engage together. So with that, I would like to appoint Dr. Christopher to place six.
Any other nominations to place six? Seeing none, Dr. Christopher is appointed to place six by acclamation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maura.
Thank you.
All right, we do not have any public hearings tonight. We will go to department reports, beginning with legal.
Good evening. Um, I am bringing resolution number 2024-031R2. This is for authorizing the renewal of the solid waste collection and disposal agreement with Madison County. Uh, the most important term to bring you is there's, there's no new increases or anything like that. We're just renewing this over with the same, um, amounts from our fees from the last agreement.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Shaw, seconded by Powell. Any questions or discussion? Ready for vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert. Motion passes. Engineering.
Okay. Uh, first, I have proposed ordinance number 2024-015. This is an amendment to the city's flood ordinance. I brought this about a month ago. We heard back from some of those in our development community, made a couple of alterations, sent those to our contact with the DECA. Um, he's given us kind of the grain light to go ahead and go forward with the adoption of this.
Okay.
So we had a first reading previous?
Had a first reading, so this is our second first reading.
You gave it some feedback. You guys took that feedback into account, and the different groups that gave you that feedback are now, I won't say happy, but at least on board with this moving forward?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, next.
Um, next is resolution, uh, number 2024-040-R, authorizing an amendment to the professional services agreement with GMC for project number 22036. This is the bir枝Green Huntsville Brown's Ferry Road Roundabout for, uh, this is, there's four right-of-way tracks that need to be acquired, so this is for the legal descriptions and exhibits for that.
Move to approve.
Okay.
Motion by Spears, seconded by Shaw. Any questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert. Motion passes.
All right, uh, next is resolution number 2024-043R, authorizing an amendment to professional services agreement with OHM Advisors, uh, project number 23011. This is Bolts and Goose Roundabout, so this is the same type of thing, uh, to acquire the right-of-way. We need to get the legal descriptions and exhibits for the tracks, uh, and this one is not to exceed $4,500.
Move to approve. Second.
Whatever. Motion, motion by Shaw, seconded by Spears. Any questions?
I don't think Greg woke up, did I?
Then we're ready for vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert. Motion passes.
And finally, I have resolution number 2024-045R, authorizing a professional services agreement with Nivens and Associates, uh, an amount not to exceed $6,600 for appraisal reports uh, on the four properties discussed in item B above for that type of project.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Powell, seconded by Shaw. Any questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert. Motion passes. Thank you, Michael. Good morning.
We have resolution number 2024-26, or excuse me, 36-R, um, and this is, uh, for a ward of bid for the wavefinding project. This is phase one. The amount is $292,122.37 out of fund 38. Happy to answer any questions.
Second.
Councilmember Powell, seconded by Shaw. Any questions?
You guys have a date or something tonight?
Not again or not.
Not that kind of, not that kind of question, Maura. Okay.
I do thank you for the work you're putting into this, and look forward to it. It's going to be really good for, for pictures at downtown and some of the other areas, so thank you.
And with the approval, what's the proposed timeframe that you think we probably would have everything in?
It'll be under six months. Uh, the, the primary time constraint, we'll be ordering all the polls, and, um, we'll have to check in on what that, that timeframe will be. Um, but we'll get started on it right away with the sign company, so...
Thank you.
Okay, ready for vote. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone. Uh, resolution 2024-047R, it says authorize an MOU with the North Alabama Drug Task Force. There's actually two separate MOUs, one that involves ALIA and one that involves North Alabama Task Force, in which ALIA is a part of. This is actually the ALIA in which ALIA is a part of. This is actually the ALIA Task Force, and the wording is very similar between the two. What this particular MOU allows us to do is, if we pick up an investigation that begins here and carries us throughout the state, we'll be able to carry on that investigation throughout the state.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Shaw, seconded by Spears. Any questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert. Motion passes.
And the second resolution, 2024-048R, is a new MOU between us and Madison County to conduct joint traffic operations throughout both the county and here in Madison with the Sheriff's Department, traffic safety being a big issue right now. And what it allows us to do is do some radar saturation and also some checkpoints for DUIs.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion seconded. Any questions? Ready for vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Recreation?
Favorite person, save me.
Good evening. I have resolution 2024-046-R, authorizing an MOU with the Madison Board of Educations for Easter egg hunt, for buses during our Easter egg hunt. Moved it up this year. I don't think we've had an actual Easter egg hunt before COVID was our last one because of weather and COVID and all that.
Move to approve.
What's the date on that?
March 23rd.
Thank you.
Rain date will be March 30th.
Bus drivers going to dress up like an Easter bunny?
No, we'll have an, we'll have an Easter bunny out there, though.
March 23rd, rain date, March 30th?
Correct.
Second. Okay, motion by Shaw, seconded by Spears. Any questions?
Let me answer them.
Okay. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
I think it's going to last. Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert. And the motion passes. Thank you, Corey.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you, Corey.
Any miscellaneous announcements?
No work session, just to confirm.
That's true. We're not having a work session in February, but we'll likely have two in March.
Okay.
And we'll announce those dates in advance.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Standing on the shoulders of so many people who have helped us find solutions to our growth problem. But we're not done, and it's a call to action for everyone out there to continue to work hard, to fill in the gaps, to make Madison, Alabama, the strongest city it possibly can be.
So we'll talk a little bit more in a minute about who helped us accomplish and do those videos. But what I recognize when you see that is you simply can't keep up if you don't work together. And we're, Dr. Nick, we've got the school board in place right now, our Madison City Council, our department head, we all must continue to strategically plan to keep education at its highest level, to work diligently to get you to and from school and work, and to continue to help this community grow. And I'm so proud to continue to work with those teams because I am proud that we continue to do a good job with it. You know, the mission statement you just see up here, the mission is accomplished. You know, one thing about it, and I'm old enough to where every once in a while you can take a Sunday drive. And a Sunday drive means that you just got in the car, big old car at that point, gas probably about a quarter a gallon, and you just went driving. And the cool thing about a Sunday drive is typically it ended with ice cream and a nap.